Can we have a pledge of allegiance? Everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you please remain for the invocation? Thank you, God, for bringing us here safely tonight. Please give us a guidance and a wisdom to make the right decisions for our community. In this we pray, amen. May we have a roll call, please? Present.
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 Present. Item number five, communications from the staff. And it looks like we have practically our entire staff tonight. So I'm going to ask you if our planning director has anything tonight? Our public works director? Our fire chief? Our building inspector? Our chief of police? Okay. Item number six, this is items from the public. These are non-agenda items. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in the meetings, it would be appreciated if you would limit your comments to three minutes so that everyone may be heard. Matters under the jurisdiction of the council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public at this time. However, California law prohibits council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. At this time, George Stillman from the Stanislaus County Public Works Director is here to give us an update with regards to flooding. And I will say that at this time, the council will also waive the three-minute rule for free as well, George.
Yeah, I have a hard time under three minutes. I think it's public works people. Bob, it's Mayor Motors of the Council. Thank you again to George Stillman, the Stanislaus County Public Works. And I would just like to give you a very short and quick update on where we are with Storm Drainage Project. We're now in the process of going through what the Corps calls their feasibility study. It's just starting. It's roughly an eighteen-month, two-year process. The first phase of this is a public meeting, and that meeting is scheduled here in your theater for the fourth of next month. That's next Thursday, starting at 3:00. And we would like to invite everyone to attend. My main, I guess, pitch tonight, and it really is a pitch, is that the processes we're going to be going through as we continue down the road to develop some solutions to funding are very political and they're very competitive. And we need lots of support to show Congress why they should spend the money in our community instead of someone else's. So again, I would like to extend an invitation that attending these meetings are very important, showing the Corps of Engineers who will be there that we do care, that there is a lot of interest, and that we can unify behind a solution to our flooding. We have been successful in getting the state of California, the Department of Reclamation, to sponsor the project locally. What that means is that they will pay half of the local shares. We go through the various phases, which should save us quite a bit of money. Again, when it gets close to a project, we need to make certain that our state representatives actually put the money in the budget, so it is there. But the state has agreed to help sponsor, which means that they will start putting some money into the project themselves. Kind of cross my fingers here if I can. There's even a chance we can obtain a rebate on some of the monies that we've already spent, some of the monies that you folks have put into the project, because their sponsorship will be retroactive to the start of the work that we've done. For the upcoming meeting, we're holding, well, again, it's going to be at the theater. It'll be an open house as opposed to a hearing. We'll have representatives from the county, representatives from the Corps to kind of take folks through the various options that are being developed to try to solicit some input, comments, better solutions, ideas we haven't thought of. The board behind me, and it's very difficult to see, are some examples of what we'll be showing. We'll have probably three options for Oristimba Creek and about five for Solado Creek. For Oristimba, we're really limited as to what we can do. Very realistically, we can provide some kind of detention with a dam. We can do something to increase capacity in the channel or a combination of the two. And I expect a lot of controversy as we go through it. But again, the input from folks, very, very important to making this successful because it is a highly competitive process. With any luck, we should be able to have a project defined in about twelve months. The present course under the feasibility study from the Corps will result in a defined project and an environmental impact report on that project so we can go then to design and then to construction. Be a very open process. I'd like to come back on a regular basis and make certain that you folks are right there with us every step of the way, because it really needs to be a partnership kind of project for all of us. Probably closer to three minutes. It's a very quick summary as to where we are. I'd be glad to answer any questions that the council may have.
Are there any questions? Okay. And you said the meeting on the fourth. Is there, there will be follow-up meetings after that, George?
Yes, when we get down to specific projects, then there'll be meetings on those projects. We'll hold several official hearings where actually testimony will be taken. This is kind of the kickoff meeting for the Corps, this feasibility study scoping meeting, where it's just, you know, folks, give us your ideas. We've generated a lot of numbers so far. We've just started the hydrology contracts with Mid Valley Engineering. And we have a firm out of Sacramento that's going to be doing some flying so we can get good quad maps. Our hope is when we pull this all together, that at least within the town, within the city of Newman, we'll be able to contain the flood. Folks will see their flood insurance rates go down, perhaps even take areas out of the flood insurance program because the protection will be provided through whatever flood control measures we develop. Our hope is that it'll be a really popular program that benefits everyone.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. Items from the public, these are agenda items. Any member of the audience desiring to address the council on a matter on the agenda, please raise your hand or step to the podium at the time the item is announced by the mayor. In order that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the council will be limited to a maximum of three minutes unless the mayor and council grants a longer period of time. Okay. Item number seven, this is the consent calendar. Are there any items that the council wishes to pull at this time? They're actually, oh, go ahead.
I'm going to pull the animal control.
Okay. At this time, we'd like to pull item D. And also, I would like to pull item E just for brief comment. Chief, could you come up for a second with regards to seven D? The informational report with Stanislaus County Animal Control Services?
Good evening.
Chief, I just had a couple of questions on this here. I understand you guys, yourself and council member Altamula, will be meeting with regards to this issue. I had a question with regards to the funds that they're talking about here. It says that they would lose, animal services would lose $3,571 per year on field services patrol. Just a suggestion that perhaps maybe we could talk to them about the amount of the fee. Maybe that may, the increase of the fee as a way to maybe offset that. And another area where I was concerned about was, it says here that the animal services operates at an annual loss to the county of approximately $700,000 per year. And I would just feel more comfortable if we just had a little bit more information with regards to that. Are there any questions?
I can just say that I'm not comfortable at this time dissolving the work that the county is doing in favor of going with more time with the scheme. Yet, until, like you say, we investigate a little bit further, because it seems as though the county is doing a fairly good job. But just my main concern is that we addressed some of the other issues, not just the licensing fees and things, but a meeting that Police Chief Brady and I are going to Friday at the Animal Services Center in Modesto will be regarding, it's basically like a session where they want to get people's ideas on how they can improve their services and things like that. And so I would imagine that some of the financial issues will also come up. If not, we will bring them up. So that, I just wanted to comment on that. And I do, would like to bring this back after we come back from the meeting and be able to contribute some more information to that.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Chief, for the report.
Sure.
And I had a question with regards to seven E. Just a correction on the date here. It says here on the very back that we will have a, unless I've read this wrong, it says we'll have it available at our next meeting on February 18th of 99. Is there just a quick correction, just because I know this is an issue that we've talked about with regards to the mobile vendors, and I know the planning commission has talked about that, and I just want to make sure that the public is going to have enough of an opportunity to speak to it at the council.
Just as a point of clarification, that's a staff report that was presented to the planning commission, and that was their regular meeting of the 18th.
Okay.
The, this is a, the review process for a draft ordinance. As part of the ordinance, there's two required public hearings, one before the planning commission. What we're providing you with is a text that the commission will be holding a public hearing on at their next regular meeting in March, and I believe that's the 18th as well. And then based on their recommendation, they'll be forwarding it to the city council, who will also be responsible for conducting a public hearing before this code could be adopted.
Okay. So we should hear something back sometime late in March? Late in March?
I would suspect that we wouldn't be able to calendar this until sometime in April.
Oh, April, okay.
Bob?
Yes, sir.
On this amendment, we list Stewart Road here. That's being changed to Hills Ferry, right? On the, where we list?
Yes, that was pointed out, that that's Hill Ferry Road. And I've already prepared draft language. And we also have looked at some additional language with respect to the vendor codes for our business licenses and incorporating some other references to clarify what the intent of the code is.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. At this time, could we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
To make the motion that we approve the consent calendar?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Item eight, this is a public hearing. At this time, we have no public hearings. At this time, before I go to item nine, we are going to add item 11A. This would be a memorandum of understanding between the Newman Crows Landing Unified School District, Healthy Start, One-Stop Community Service Center Program, and the City of Newman as item 11A.
Yeah, just need to find that there's a need to take immediate action, and that need arose after the agenda was done. I think Cleve can give you a little report on that so you can make those findings.
In order for you to do that, this is a memorandum that the school district is asking us to adopt in order to allow them to apply for their Healthy Start grant. And this will, this does not really commit the city, it does not commit us to any funding at this time. It does commit us to cooperation and working with them in various programs that they might do, and we're already doing that. And so we're comfortable at this time that this is something that is favorable for us to do and work with the school district on. Unfortunately, they have to have this back in order to submit with their grant by, I believe it's on Monday. And it just came to us this week, and we were unable to get it on the agenda in time.
Does the council agree to have this added? Okay. Okay. Item 9A, this is regular business, approve a request from Alan Demo to hold fundraising event in the city of Newman. Chief?
I'll probably talk a little bit more this time. Last year, actually, at just about the same time, I came forward to council with Mr. Demo regarding a brand-new event. Well, that event went very successful. That was our Hogs and Hot Dogs MDA fundraiser, which was April 19th of last year. About $10,000 was raised, ninety percent of that was donated to MDA. Last year, I think we were anticipating between 200 and 500, I think, wasn't it, Alan? I think we had about 1,200 show up, about 800 motorcycles. So parking was a real premium, and we expanded and made do. But one of the things I got to say is that we did this event, and we didn't have any problems at all. It was, it went very well, and I think the business community did very well during that event also. He did so well, and he told me he wasn't going to do this again, but he's here again, and he's wishing to hold this event again. So hence, we are here trying to see how we're going to administer this year's fundraiser. He's also looking at not only including MDA, but also local charities this year as part of this fundraising. Alan tells me he can double what he did last year, and I'm hoping somewhat that he may not be able to meet that goal. That's, I'm not sure where we're going to put all those folks, but we're all going to have a good time, and I think we can make it work here for us. With these expanded needs that he's requesting, we're also going to have expanded services and equipment that are going to be required, and he is requesting. He's already contacted business owners in the downtown area and received approval from all of them regarding the street closure and the event. And he's wishing to obtain approval this evening for the event from the city council before proceeding further. Some of the requests that we're looking at is the street closure. Last year, we just took it from the city park to, I mean, from the city parking lot down to Merced Street. This year, we're looking at taking all of Main Street from Kern all the way down to Merced Street. And this would all be on April 18th of this year, from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. He's also requesting exclusive use of the city parking lot across from the West Side Theater and the alley behind this parking lot that goes from Fresno to Tulare Street. And again, this would be needed during the same time period on that same date. He's also requesting some other things, is the Main Street building lights be turned on on April 15th, 16th, 17th. Cities provide garbage cans cleaned immediately after the event and use of the city's street sweeper. The city to provide use of the city barricades and electricity. City provide the use of the street closure area for a beer garden, waive the city ordinance that forbids drinking on a public street. That is something we definitely need if we want this event. And the city provide the officers of the Newman Police Department and exorb the cost of the overtime. And the city to obtain the required liability insurance for themselves. Just want to make you aware of some of the costs that we would be, to meet some of these requests. A lot of, there's not a whole lot of cost in most of the items that we're looking at. We also discovered that the use of the street sweeper that he's requesting would not be necessary as we, the normal operation of the street sweeper would allow for the cleanup of the Main Street. Barricades and other such things are, would be able to be provided, and that he would look into the actual garbage cans and pick up of those things. So, and figuring out from his estimate, and I probably should go a little bit more, but it's my opinion that we're going to need 11 officers that are going to be needed, are going to be required to run this event. And I've run down the cost of what that's going to be. I've also, a note here, also, that we are not a large police department, and I will have to acquire additional resources from other departments to be able to make this event happen, to make those 11 officers. The last thing that we're kind of looking at is as far as the cost is concerned, is the staff is recommending that the city not absorb the cost of the event's liability insurance as requested at this point. It's felt that if the city does this, this is a set of precedent that will set, and it will put the city at odds with other fundraising organizations at the council.
Mike, on the, on the staff report here, it says that at the time of the writing of the staff report, there was no cost available. Do you guys have the cost?
Yeah, we were, do you want to report on that, Mike?
Well, basically, I can say that we contacted Diversified Risk as stated in the report, and they do, will not be able to, Diversified Risk would not be able to handle it. Cleve, could you handle the RMA?
Yeah, this is, Diversified Risk for them, it's a special events insurance that is provided through our current insurance pool that we are a member of. However, this type of activity is one that they have an exclusion for, and they will not cover. And therefore, we're not able to obtain insurance through them. The RMA, the insurance pool that we're a member of, has a, our liability policy would cover the event. However, they have a stipulation in there that if we do cover the event and do not obtain, transfer the risk to the third party who is actually sponsoring the event, in that case, our self-insurance retention, as they call it, which is similar to what we know as a deductible on our car insurance or house insurance, whatever, is actually doubled per claim that might be received. And that current retention limit for the city is $10,000 per claim. So if it were doubled, it would be $20,000 per claim. So in the event that there were any claims, for each claim that was filed, we would have to cover the first 25, or $20,000 of that claim. And I have a real concern, I don't think that that's a risk that the city should take, even though I will agree, and I've talked to several people about this event, and I agree that it was a good event, there were no problems virtually with it last year. But when you have that many people with this type of activity, there is the potential for a problem.
What did we do last year?
Actually, it was a complete MDA fundraiser. This year, we're looking at, or actually, I'm not looking at, but Mr. Demo is looking at having local charities be the beneficiary of this. And I'd like to have him speak to that issue if.
Well, why don't you go ahead and finish your report?
Oh, okay.
And then just, and then we'll.
That might be good, too. The last, basically, the last page that I have of the report is basically an over recommendation. As you can see in there, it's pretty, it covers some basic things in here. Number five, which I was looking at, the amount of portables. We have, I've talked with Mr. Demo regarding this, and I've agreed to put that down to 10, because we're looking at being able to, with the support of the community, that the restrooms that are utilized from restaurants and other businesses in the area, would be encouraged that the, the public would be invited actually to use their, those facilities also. So that way, that way I could bring that number down and put less of a strain on to him. Unless you have, I can go, unless you'd like me to go through each one of those, I'd like to go down to number 13 and see if there's any others that you would feel necessary as far as any kind of requirements at this point.
I don't see any other requirements. I, if you've already talked to Mr. Demo, then I certainly don't want to see us become overburdened here on his ability to, you know, on their ability to do a good job again like they did last year. But since you've gone through your staff report, maybe at this time, if Alan Demo would like to get up and give us a quick rundown?
Good evening. I'd like to just hand you a couple of clips that came out of the paper last year. For those of you who weren't on the city council last year, you can take a look at that and kind of refresh your memories with it. Had some very good articles in, some of the different things that were in there, representatives from Thunder Press Magazine. Were equally impressed by this event being the first time. Downtown gave it very high marks. I think we all agree with that. On some of the items for the requirement, I would just like to talk about them just for, just for a minute if we could. One, since it's right at the top, we'll start with that. The insurance. I understand with your insurance with the city, the requirements of that. However, I am looking into other insurance at this time. I do not have the prices back right now, but I will before the next city council meeting. And what I would like to do is just kind of table it at this time and review it later on, excuse me. Gosh, I guess I get nervous when I'm in front of people.
Alan, Alan, on some of these recommendations, on some of the recommended requirements, are there, out of the 12 that are on here, can you live with these, or are there some?
Yes, no, they're all okay. The only thing I'd like to do is at the next one, talk about the liability insurance. The toilets, no problem. Number six, I would like to take a look at that.
All right.
One reason why I'm asking for these things is last year, MDA supported the entire deal. And with my involvement in the community and wanting to donate back to the community, MDA bowed to step out of this because they do not have full control of it, the monies and everything. So in doing that, I kind of put a burden on my own self by wanting to donate back to the community. So if these costs could be incurred by the city, it'd be appreciated.
Are there any questions for Mr. Demo?
I have a couple of questions here. One, where you say you plan to start the event with a dance on Saturday. Where do you plan to hold this dance?
Well, I have a couple places that we could, possibly the Louis Newman Hall, or possibly maybe the West Side Theater. I'm not sure yet.
I think the West Side Theater has a.
That's correct, they do. They do.
And have you contacted, it says that you've contacted all the business owners. I spoke with Bud at Ace Hardware, and he hadn't been contacted. And he is the most likely one to be affected by the street closure.
I'm sorry, David, he has been contacted.
I just talked to him Sunday. Did you talk to him since then?
Yes, I have.
Okay. And he agreed that that was no problem with him?
Yes, he did.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
No question, just a comment. I don't, if anyone was here last year and participated in this or took part, they'll know that it was a fantastic project, and congratulations, Alan.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say that we want to help you as much as we can, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. In doing this, the cost that I'm asking you to incur, like with the police department, if I could put $1,900 back into the community, into the West Side Theater, into Tosca, into OLM, into the FFA in town, I think that'd be great. Last year, we raised $8,000 here. I personally raised $12,000, donated $20,000 to MDA. So this year, I'm looking to do that here and keeping that money, the majority of it, right here.
Yeah, I just want to make one comment as well, just to follow up on what council member Martino was saying. It was a very good event last year. There was a lot of people, everybody that I had talked to, the business owners downtown were very happy, that, you know, everybody did very well that day, and, you know, they were glad to have people in our community. And so the one thing that I would ask is that, this is obviously going to be a lot bigger this year, and I would hope that you work with the city manager and the chief of police as soon as possible when you get some information. And that way, what you could do is, and I'd like to reiterate to the staff that, you know, I'd like for this to be as less bureaucratic as possible. That way, the, that way this event could happen again this year. And, you know, rather than have us, you know, sitting here and going through items with you that maybe we don't agree on, I think it'd be better maybe work through the staff and come back with a good recommendation.
Yes, and everything is pretty much agreed to, except for a couple of things. And if we could work through this, you know, the city and the fundraising event, that'd be fine. I have no problem with that.
And if you'd like, we could schedule you at the very next meeting? That way, we could get this.
That would be fine. I think the only thing that we, you know, right now is on the insurance. We don't have the figures on that. And if we could wait till, you know, at that time, all the other things, I'm fine with. The only thing is the cost of the department.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and we look forward to having this event again in the middle of April.
I can talk now, I'm fine, so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alan. Okay, item 9B, this is to award a proposal for city engineering services to precision inspection and authorize city manager to prepare agreement for council approval. Cleve?
Thank you, mayor and council. As you recall, on October 13th, our current city engineer, Bill Henry, notified us that he was submitting his resignation, was preparing to retire and move on to other things in his life, I guess. And at that time, we, I announced that we would send out a proposal. Um, and at that time, we, I announced that we would send out proposals, we did that on December fifteenth, and received proposals on January fifteenth. Uh, we received proposals from twelve engineering firms, uh, up and down the valley, as far away as Sacramento and Fremont were a couple of them, most of them were, were more local to the valley area, though. Um, we narrowed the, uh, with the public works director and myself and the city engineer, narrowed the firms down to the top, uh, six, so we cut it in half, and we interviewed those six, uh, Bill Henry, uh, Chewie Garcia, our current city engineers, uh, Ernie Garcia, public works director, and myself, interviewed them on February eleventh. Um, it was a, a tough decision, it was, interviews went very well, I feel that we got some excellent, uh, uh, firms that, uh, we basically narrowed, had four of them that we felt could do the job and do a good job for us. Um, in the end, when it came down to us, uh, we, uh, elected to choose the, the firm of, uh, precision engineering, who you are all, uh, very familiar with currently, um, as we've noted in the report and, and in the, um, uh, proposal, which is attached to your report, uh, Kelly Hislop of Precision Engineering has hired Richard Godina in his firm, who is a registered civil, civil engineer, um, to handle this and do other work as well for him up and down the, the valley with, with his firm. Um, I feel very comfortable in this ti- at this time, uh, and it was pretty much a unanimous decision in, in recommending, uh, Precision Engineering and Richard Godina, uh, to represent us as our city engineers. Um, Richard has some experience with the city of, uh, Waterford as city engineers, and, uh, several other years of experience, many other years of experience in, in the engineering field. And, uh, he's, one thing that specifically impressed me up in the city of Waterford was some of the areas that they were able to obtain funds, uh, state and federal funds for, uh, street projects, which is, will be a, a big plus for us if, if he can pull off the same feet for us here, so. That's, uh, one thing that we have a great need for, and, and is very competitive, and, um, it's difficult to come with, uh, up with those funds, because they are, uh, very competitive, and, and there's a great need for them. So, with that, um, my recommendation at this time, uh, because of the, the reference checking and et cetera, the things that I did, we didn't have time to get a, a, uh, agreement prepared at this time, uh, but what I am, would like to recommend to the council, that they approve, uh, the selection of, uh, Precision Engineering and Richard Godina as our next to provide city engineering services, and allow me to go back and, and negotiate agreement. What I am recommending at this time is that we negotiate a, a one-year agreement, um, with, uh, uh, some renewal options in that, either two or three-year renewal options, um, to allow us to, to work through this, uh, this first year. Um, and, uh, then I would bring that back to the city council at your, at your March meeting, March ninth meeting. Um, and I'm open to any questions, and, and, uh, Mr. Godina and Kelly are here from Precision Inspection, if you have any questions for any of them.
Are there any questions? Okay, can we have some direction on this item?
I make a motion that we award the proposal for a city engineering services to Precision Inspection, Richard Godina, and authorize city manager to prepare agreement for council approval.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes five to zero, and I want to congratulate Precision Inspection at, at this rate, it, we're going to be contracting out all of our services with Precision Inspection at the rate we're going. Congratulations. Okay, this is item nine C, this is appoint members to the downtown streetscape committee, Cleve?
Okay. Um, city council and mayor, you have, uh, my report in your packet, uh, we did receive, no, I didn't even count them, one, two, three, four, five, eight, nine, uh, applications for people who are interested in serving on this committee. Um, I would like to note that, uh, Robert Novoa, uh, withdrew his name since that time, so he is asked, he has, commitments will not allow him to participate, he stated. So, he is, has asked that his name be withdrawn from the list. Um, other than that, um, I know that some of the people are here tonight, I'm, I'm looking at, I believe, Ken Rodriguez mentioned that he would not be able, he did call, we asked him to attend, he mentioned that he would not be able to attend, but he is very interested in, in being on the committee. Um, as far as makeup, I, I've listed down here what we had recommended and tentatively approved, but it, it does not definitely have to stick to this, um, was one council member, one planning commissioner, three downtown business owners, and two citizens, um, to make up the, the committee for this. Um, I, I don't have a recommendation for you, you have their applications in here, what I would like to do is just, uh, see if we can come up with, with, with the committee members based on, on what you have here.
Okay. Are there any questions? No. I would just like to say, uh, I'm glad to see that there's a number of downtown business owners here, being that this is going to affect them. And, uh, in terms of the planning commissioner, I, I don't have a problem with having the two commissioners on there, plus we're asking for one council member, and with the one council member, we would have a, a number of nine total. I would ask if, uh, with his work with the, um, um, Chamber of Commerce, now he's the appointed member, plus the, uh, plus all his volunteer work with the theater, uh, I would ask that perhaps we, uh, appoint Dave Reed to sit on this committee, if the council... Okay. Great. Okay, I would ask that we include the members that are on here, and let me read them off, Ken Rodriguez, Carol Stevens, Doug Motosa, Brenda Buckens, Meredith Tizzard, uh, Mary Jim Silveira, uh, Tom Applegate, uh, Deborah Allen, and council member David Reed. If, if there are no objections, I would ask that we, uh, appoint these members to serve as the, uh, downtown streetscape committee for the city of Newman.
I so move that we appoint members to the downtown streetscape committee.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes five to zero, I want to, uh, thank everybody who has volunteered to serve on this committee, uh, thank everybody for coming forward.
Just for information, we will be contacting you to find out, uh, meeting times, when you are available, when we can do that, and, uh, uh, we'll set up the first meeting, um, probably be, uh, sometime maybe around the second week of March, is the, when we will be holding the first meeting at this time. If you have any questions, you can call either myself or, uh, Judy Silver, the city clerk.
Okay, item nine D, this is resolution number ninety-nine, next to number, a resolution authorizing Cleve Morris, city manager, to enter into an agreement with Corbett Willett Systems Incorporated to upgrade the city financial accounting software, municipal operations manager, PVX version program. Margaret will, head of it.
Good evening, mayor and honorable members of the council. Uh, the item before you is an upgrade to the city software package to run our, our, basically our financial work that the city does, the finance department does, utility billing, business license, general ledger, accounts payable, accounts receivables. Um, this program was purchased in nineteen ninety-one, in nineteen ninety-five, Corbett Willett's, who's the provider, announced an upgrade to the package called New MOM, and that, at that time, they had devised a system that not only internally was much faster and worked better, because as we all know, the programming features are always, uh, improving, it also puts this particular package in more of a PC window mouse-driven environment, which, uh, the bottom line is, it allows the users to get rid of the dumb terminals that are sitting on their desk and use the PCs and the terminal as a combined unit. Uh, so this was announced back in ninety-five, since that time, about seventy-five percent of the MOM users have installed or are currently installing the system, and the greatest feature of this at this point, and the reason why it's, uh, brought up now, is that the new MOM is Y2K compatible. Uh, back when it was announced in ninety-five, it wasn't quite an issue as it is today. But we do need to upgrade the system come December thirty-first of this year, to make sure that our utility billing and all the other features that it does run, uh, operate smoothly. So, this is the first physical step that we're taking at our department, in order to make sure that everything is upgraded, so it'll run smoothly come January one.
Are there any questions for Margaret? Can we have some direction?
I move approval of resolution number ninety-nine, next number, resolution authorizing M. Cleve Morris to enter into an agreement with Corbett Willett Systems Incorporated to upgrade the city's financial accounting software, municipal operations manager, MOM, PVX version. Second.
We have a motion in a second, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes five to zero. Item nine E, this is a mid-year budget review. Margaret?
This particular item used to be an in-house housekeeping, uh, function, that kind of verified the accuracy and tracked the patterns of the financial activities of any city. But back in the nineteen eighties and nineties, when funds started becoming short, the mid-year budget review took on a special importance, and it even had gotten so important that oftentimes during the budget cycle, things were put off until mid-year to make sure that the funds were available to do certain expenditures. At this point, we really use the cycle, it, it's a prudent and a, a sound thing to do, because it gives us an opportunity to look at the budget as a whole and see how we've progressed in the last half year. We evaluate our original budget projections to determine how close we were, were the costs actually what we thought they would be. We evaluate our original revenue projections to make sure that the funds are coming in as expected. It is a requirement that council approve all expenditures, and that is done at the time that you, uh, authorize the specific purchase of a project or an item. And at that time, you look at that, and we say there's money in the budget, but you don't have the opportunity to see what the entire effect of that item is, and all the new items will have on the particular budget and the city's finances. This gives you the opportunity to see that. Uh, it's the opportunity to compare the expenses, the new expenses, to the revenues which went in, which can't be done, as you approve and look at each separate item during the course of the year. It also gives you the opportunity to approve all the costs which have gone over the original projections as required by law. Initially, the departments review their expenditures, verify their accuracy, and anticipate the costs that will, will come on through the rest of the year. At that time, we also review revenues to make sure that those costs can be met. And if you turn to your first page, the first spreadsheet called City of Newman Income Statement, this shows you the final result, the one item that's really important to look at when you're talking about budget. Basically, it takes the cash balance as of the beginning of the year, June of ninety-eight, and the projected revenue as it was revised, and the projected is expenses as revised, and it ends with what we expect the cash balance to be in June of ninety-nine. Uh, a few items, just for general information, budget versus actual, sometimes you hear those words, phrases, used interchangeably, they're not. A budget is a dollar amount approved by council, actual is when the cost is act- when cash is drawn down by paying for the item. If you have excess cash within, within the particular fund, you don't have to budget it, it just sits there and can be drawn down in the case of an unbudgeted emergency. You only budget the amount of money that you know that you're going to need to spend. You only budget for revenue and expenses, not the other items that are news, uh, usually show up in a financial report. There is no carryover. If a particular item is budgeted for this year and it's not all spent, it goes, the cash goes back, it stays intact in the pot, and next year you start over again and rebudget accordingly. If someone asks you, what is the city of Newman's budget, the number that you would say is eight million sixty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy, that is the new projected amount, when that budgeted amount is the amount that you have approved for expenditures for that year. If people ask you, well, what's the city's cash balance, you would say, as of June thirtieth, it was six point eight million, as of January thirty-first, ninety-nine, it was six point nine million. You get a report of the cash balance every month. If you want to know what our assets are, basically, they are at twenty million, twenty-one, uh, point five million dollars. This includes the cash, the receivables, cash with a fiscal agent, assets minus the depreciation. Actual transfers that are discussed during this process and looked at are not actually done until year-end. At that time, I'll come back to you and actually give you the total picture of what amounts need to be transferred and what additional cash needs to be approved for the, for the actual spending of nineteen ninety-eight, ninety-nine. And, the bottom line, our budget is eight million sixty-two thousand, we will not spend all of that, but we have to be sure that every item that might be spent is covered, and it is expected that we will not be spending that total amount. On page one, we've already gone over basically what, what it says, where we started the year, the revised revenue and expense projections, and what were, we should be at the end of next year. The only three, uh, funds that need to be looked at and where there's concern is Fund Twenty-One and Twenty-Four, gas tax and LTF, that's the source of funding for the street projects, and gas tax is usually the source of, of funding for street maintenance. The reason why those two funds are, are short at this point in time, is that we are in the process of completing and have completed five extensive street projects, they have totaled over eight hundred and fifty thousand, and we've only been reimbursed by the state and the feds at six hundred and fifty thousand. This means over two hundred thousand dollars had to come out of the city's share of LTF and gas tax money to fund these projects, and it will take a few years to replenish that deficit, so that, that is not a problem, that's anticipated. We save the money over years, and then we spend it as the project comes due. And actually, we will not have spent all this amount as of June of ninety-nine, because one of the major projects is the Inyo Road railroad crossing, and that won't be done by then, but we still need to set aside and make you aware that this money has been obligated for this project. The third fund in question is a storm drain fund, which is, will be, is projected to be short by forty thousand. What contributed to that deficit is a sixty thousand project that it caused to do the canal, school, road, storm drain project a few months ago. That was expected, and, and that certainly had an, an impact on this particular fund. There is a problem with this fund, is that currently there is no set means of achieving revenue to replenish this fund. This will be addressed at another time, I believe, with the, um, public works director and the city manager, that we'll find other mechanisms that perhaps we could raise fees or get some sort of revenue to balance this fund again, but that's basically where it came. There, in total, there's been over four storm drain projects that have been completed over the past two years, and they also have put quite a toll on what was, used to be a pretty healthy fund. Don't be concerned on the RDA funds or redevelopment. the revised figure is six point four, we have an increase of a hundred and fifty-two thousand, and the expenses, originally, you approved eight million nine thousand, and now it's projected to eight million sixty-two thousand. And, when you, and that's a fifty-two thousand dollar increase in expenditure, but the net increase positiveness of the entire budget is ninety-nine thousand dollars. Now, you look into the very last column, that is taking the newly revised revenues, subtracting the newly revised expenditures, and you see a one point five million dollar deficit. That is not a deficit. All that is saying is that the expenses for this particular year is one point, is expected to be one point five million dollars less than expected revenues, but that's okay, remembering that last year we got over three point five million dollars in a revenue, uh, the tax allocation bond for redevelopment agency, and we'll be spending that money for the next thirty years. So, of course, in those cases, there's money that we have in reserve, and in those particular funds are always, will, most likely will be more of, more expenditures and revenues, and that's okay, because you- and that's okay because you have the beginning cash to carry that over. So that does not mean any of these funds are in deficit, except those that we looked at a little bit ago. Page three shows a history of the funds, of the revenues coming in. And the last column is the difference from what was actually projected at the beginning of the year and the newly revised projection, and that's the hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars increase in projected revenues. Page four does the same thing, historical view of expenditures by fund. And that's the fifty-three thousand dollars more, expected to be spent more in the revised column than what was originally budgeted at the beginning of the year. Page five is expenditures by departments, not by funds. Same total, but it shows where the historical view of the department's spending and where we need to make up some more money. Or not, just where the difference is. Let me rephrase that. The projected difference of what was original budget adopted and what we see the year end closing. And page six is taking the line item numbers under the expenditures where we see a need to transfer or where council approval has or has been given, or will be given, on particular items that has gone or will go under budget.
Are there any questions for Margaret?
Margaret, in the audit from Riccardi Associates, one of the observations was that the agency's property tax increment can only be used to pay debt, in which case the city must re-advance to the agency monies for use for community development. Is that reflected in this financial statement, or?
It's reflected if you look under the income statement. The general fund has advanced to the redevelopment agency six hundred and two thousand, if you look on Fund Number Ten.
Okay, receivable.
Yes. And that's why you see these negative numbers, these deficits, in redevelopment because they, the tax increment goes into Fund Ninety-seven, which is called debt service. We put that in there. At the end of the year, we will transfer that money to each of the redevelopment areas, housing and the regular redevelopment agency. And that will bring the balance back up to zero. But if, that's why you look at that as a whole.
And then the grant monies that we anticipate receiving for the senior housing project would be included in the next year's budget, I imagine.
Well, if you look under Grant Number Nineteen, Grant Housing, you see one point three million dollars, and you see spent one point three million dollars. So there is no change. The grant funds usually stay, the balance stays zero. For every dollar we get, for every dollar we spend, we get a dollar back. So the balance of the fund is actually zero. But you see the revenues, we expect one point three million. And that's where I realized we're not going to spend it all this year.
That was my question. Haven't received, we haven't received it, but we expect to.
No, we haven't spent it either. But it's obligated.
That's good.
Because we don't know exactly when we're going to spend it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just one. Margaret, with the reduction in license fees, where does that, does that show up in this report?
No, it doesn't because this fiscal year, you mean the motor vehicle fees?
Yes.
Yeah, this fiscal year, the state has committed themselves to reimbursing us the twenty-five percent that it's going down. We'll have to see July first what they're going to do for next fiscal year.
How will we budget to make up that difference?
For next year? Well, we'll have to look at the whole package. Next year, we have to take all the general fund expenditures and then take into account the loss of that. We get over two hundred thousand dollars, so we'd have to take off what we anticipate losing. And then the whole pot would have to be weighed against requested expenditures.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Margaret, oh, go ahead.
Margaret, on a scale of one to ten, one being super healthy and ten being bankrupt, what would you say the financial situation of the city is?
Based from what I've seen in other communities, I'd rate us a high nine.
Thank you. Very good.
It's the other way, Margaret.
How about a two?
It's the other way.
How about a two, Margaret? You're making me nervous.
Prudent is our guide word.
Margaret, you had those figures flipped around. Ten was bankrupt. And you said high nine.
It was a trick question, actually.
Margaret, I had a couple of quick questions. With regards to, and this is before you get to any of the, this is a couple pages in, with regards to the, when you talked about areas of concern. Do you know, with regards to, it says here, the hundred and forty-one thousand, hundred and ninety-three dollars is unanticipated revenue and transfers in the redevelopment agency. Do you know how much of that is transfers, to separate them?
What page are you on?
Well, it's actually.
Is it a text?
He's looking at part of your text report, yeah.
Of the text.
Right.
Oh, a great portion of that.
Okay. Most of it is transfers?
And it's not really, it's just, we sold a bond for three point nine million. At that time, they kept the funds necessary to cover the costs of issuing the bond. They keep one period's worth of payments in case something happens and we default. It's typical that any bond, they'll keep one year's worth of payments. And then they hold a little bit in reserve. And we got back more than they had held, like twelve, thirteen thousand alone in one check, unspent bond money. So that increases our three point five million.
Okay, okay. And the other quick question I had, you said that you were going to get with the City Manager and Public Works Director with regards to this storm drain fund. And we'll hear something back within the next month because that fund is a huge concern as far as being able to have more revenues going in there.
Yeah, what we're going to do is work on that and bring something back to you with your annual budget process, which will be starting up, actually, on March second when we have our goal-setting meeting, and from there we'll be proceeding with that. So we will be working on various alternatives that we can bring back with you to actually fund storm drain, which is one program in the city that is very important, that does not have a funding source. And that's, literally, there's no revenues expected to come into that fund, so.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Margaret. This was not an action item. This is just for review. At this time, item ten, I'm going to ask that we adjourn to meet as the Newman Redevelopment Agency. May we have a roll call, please?
Present.
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 Present. Item ten B. Item ten B, this is the approval of a facade project at nine thirty-eight Fresno Street, the Oddfellows Building.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to have to abstain from this for the conflict of interest.
Okay, Margaret.
As you may recall, the facade program's been going on for a few years. There was an application submitted by the Oddfellows to the city for a facade grant to improve the awning that is over the sidewalk on Fresno and Main Street. There will be construction done on this job. A building permit has been obtained. Architecture Review Committee reviewed the plans, which is basically just repairing and replacing the awnings and the plaster and repainting it. The painting will be the same as the bottom of the building with the white, the cream colored color and the blue trim. The projected cost of the project will be six thousand dollars, and if that is what the actual cost will become, the grant amount after the work is done and approved will be one thousand four hundred dollars. And this is really neat. We've got two other applications that have been taken out. And with these three together, that could have quite an impact on the appearance of downtown.
Okay. Are there any questions for Margaret? Okay, thank you for your report, Margaret. Can we have some direction on this item, please?
I recommend approval of the facade project at nine thirty-eight Fresno Street, Oddfellows Building.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes four to zero with one non-participating. Thank you. Before we get to eleven A, actually, I'm going to recognize Alan Demo again. He had some questions with regards to the fundraiser.
I'm sorry. I hate to get back up here again. I just had one question on this. I understand I'll get with the City Manager and the Police Chief on everything. The one item I believe we needed to vote on was for the approval or non-approval, whether the Police Department was going to be paid by myself or the city.
Did we want to discuss that, or what do we want to do on that? Our city attorney is recommending that we come back with the entire proposal. That's what he's suggesting.
Okay, at what time? When? Well, no, we wouldn't do it next week. It would be at the March ninth meeting.
Can I give you enough time?
Well, the insurance is no problem. I don't have a problem with that. I'm sure we can work through that. I know a hard cost of the Police Department is of eighteen hundred dollars. As I'm working on a limited budget, I need to know because, you know, as the event gets closer, I'm doing things and allocating the different funds different ways. So I need to know whether I need to set, you know, set this aside, what we need to do with that. So I do need to know.
Okay. Chief, last year, let's see, let me, we're looking at eighteen hundred and sixteen dollars. What was the staffing requirement last year? What's that? Hold on a second. Okay. At this time, I'm going to ask that we adjourn as a redevelopment agency and reconvene to regular session.
Well, basically, we were gearing up for a much smaller event. And I was able to staff that with a lot of volunteer time, myself, my lieutenant, and some other reserve officers. But I don't have, I have a twelve-man department, so I need eleven staff.
How many did we have last year, though?
I had six of us altogether. But I only have one reserve that would be able to, to actually, if he chose to donate his time, that would be something that we, at this point. It's a whole different ballgame when I'm having to get that much more manpower to, to make this kind of.
Could we find out, just to throw it out there to ask, could we find out if any of your officers would be willing to possibly volunteer for something like this? It's just, it's just a question to ask.
That could be asked.
Okay. Perhaps, I personally, you know, I don't have a problem with, and I know we've just gone through our mid-year budget review and all with Margaret, but I know that, and I'm sure that we have information, but all I know is I remember how successful the event was last year. And, you know, this is going to be quite a bit bigger, meaning that the businesses downtown will benefit. It's not only going to be for MDA, but it's also going to be for local charities as well. And I'm not sure that you could necessarily put a price tag on that, but I know that this is good for the community, and I think that, you know, this is going to be big. And I remember, Jim's not here anymore, but, you know, we thought that this was wonderful. And, you know, there's going to be the dance the night before, so that'll help the community. And at this point, I would say that, you know, I would want to hear from the rest of the council, but at this time, I would say that I would be in favor of allocating this amount of money. And of course, the Chief of Police will get back to us with regards to, you know, any type of volunteerism. That would be greatly appreciated by the city, of course. But at this time, I do not have a problem allocating these funds just because I know this is going to come back a lot more to our community.
I know we have one volunteer, if you notice in your report, I'm there.
I just want to mention, we need to be aware that there may be a concern with asking them to volunteer in their own community with some FLSA issues and some other things. I'm not sure that they could do that.
You know, I would be opposed to them volunteering.
Yeah.
I think that.
Okay.
The other issue that I, and hopefully I'm not becoming the bad guy with Alan, but I would just caution the council that this is only one of many activities and possibly other fundraiser activities that may come up in the community, and some already do exist, and caution you that this is one that if we do this, I'm sure that it'll come back to us again. And I also realize this is an important fundraiser. I realize it's a good cause, and I respect Alan for what he's doing. I think it's a great thing. But on my level, I would caution us, and I don't think it would be appropriate for us to go out and recommend approval of the funding these items at this time.
You know, Cleve, the only thing I think, you know, that we have to judge each one independently because I think this is a wonderful time for the City of Newman to showcase our town. It does do a lot of, generates a lot of income for the merchants in town. I don't know. I would be in a position to say I'd be in favor, the same as Charles, if there was any way that we could budget this and provide those funds.
What, where would the money come from? Which fund? From the general fund?
General fund, yes.
Have we incurred overtime for things like the Fall Festival? And have we absorbed those costs, or has the committee paid those costs?
Hold on.
Just one second.
Well, I know in our warrants here, we had, we paid about nine hundred or so dollars to the Sheriff's Department for Fall Festival.
Security.
Security in our warrants, so.
That was paid for by the Fall Festival committee. They pay for all the overtime and additional security. And that's a fundraiser, so they make funds to offset that cost. There are a lot of service clubs or activities that go on that aren't fundraisers, such as the band review, the high school games. All these service clubs and organizations are required to pay the additional cost of officers.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, Tom Applegate, thirty-one, Blue Tail Way. Newman Rotary has a event each year, and we're charged for the building to have it. We raised fifty-six hundred dollars that goes back into the community. We just got a grant for fifteen thousand dollars which is going to the teen center. So then I feel that we should get ours free also. I mean, you know.
Well, as Councilmember Martina said, you know, we'll look at, we're, I personally, I speak for myself here. I am more than happy if somebody's, if somebody's going to put money into the community, if they're going to raise funds for our community, and they're going to bring people into our community to showcase our community, it seems to me that that's what we're trying to do all along here, is bring people into our community to help business. And, you know, most of us were there last year that seen this. And, you know, we all talked about having it from Merced Street to Kern. And I, I just think that this is money well-spent because it's something that we're always trying to do, bring people into our community. And if anybody else, any service club, would like to come to us and show us, I, hey, I don't have a problem promoting our community. I mean, I think that's, I think that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to promote our community and bring people here and spend their dollars here and help out our local businesses. That's, I think that's what we're trying to do.
But the Fall Festival brings a lot of people into this community and spends a lot of money and get a lot of tax dollars out of it, and they have to pay also. So I feel that if you're on a paper.
But Tom, though, if I'm not mistaken, I think that we just pay some insurance and some other costs as well.
Yeah, but they pay twenty-four hundred dollars in fees and.
Tom, I'm not arguing.
No, no, I'm just trying to say, I was just trying to say, if you do it for one, you do it for all.
And you know what? And I don't have a problem because I'll be the first one to say that the Fall Festival, as everybody here knows, is a great event. You know, it's very well-attended. You know, the businesses do very well on that weekend, and, you know, and we promote our community very well. And I look at it as if it's money that's going to be coming back to us. I think it's money well-spent. You know, we always, you know, one of the things, just to go off on a tangent just a little bit, you know, with this thing with the Downtown Committee, the reason we're doing all this is we want to improve our community the way it looks to bring people into our community. Well, it seems to me that if we have events like this that bring people into our community, they become aware of it. And, you know, I know that, you know, I think the council has always been, I will say, you know, for the last seven years that I've been on the council, I think the council's always been very prudent. And we haven't, I don't believe, been reckless with the way we spend the city's funds. And I just think that this is a good example of something that's good for the community. And it's going to come back to us, I believe, and a great deal more than what we're spending here. I believe that.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's not a bad project. I just say, like, Newman Rotary puts twenty-six thousand dollars a year back into this community.
And I will say to Newman Rotary and to every other service club that, you know, we are more than happy to work with you. We want to work with our community. That's all. I mean, if they want, all I'm saying, and this will be the last word on it, is if they're willing to do something for our community. I mean, if they want, all I'm saying, and this will be the last word on it, is if they're willing to do something for our community, the service clubs, then I don't see why we shouldn't be willing to do something for them. If they're willing to invest our community, we should, in our community, and we should be willing to invest in what they do.
Agreed with you. Thank you.
That's all I say.
Thank you.
At any rate, I'll bring this back with regards to the eighteen hundred. Go ahead.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
First, on the side, Margaret, is there a fund that if I were to donate, say, my February, March, and April hundred dollar salary as a council member, can it go in a fund directly to pay towards this eighteen hundred dollars?
It could.
Okay, well, then I'll donate three hundred, my three hundred dollars for February, March, and April. I need it after that for the dog fund. So that'll drop that down to one thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars that needs. And hopefully, that'll help you, because I think it's a good idea, too. And like, I agree with what council member Martina said, that you have to take these things all on an individual basis. You know, you doesn't, just because you approve something for one organization doesn't mean that you have to approve them all down the line. It's all on an individual basis. And I think that organizations that are helping the community, they are doing it because they want to help the community. It's not a competition. And I don't think that, you know, with respect to Mr. Applegate and anyone else, I don't think that it's fair to say, well, look what they got, and I need that, too. I think we should all just be glad that this person wants to do this here. And so, you know, to put my money where my mouth is, there's, it's down to fifteen hundred now.
I have a question with regards to our funds. With regards to the, well, I've not even, I've learned to not ask Margaret questions with regards to... At this time, I'm going to ask for any other questions with regards to this eighteen hundred and sixteen dollars on this item, to approve or disapprove of this, I will ask the council at this time.
Yeah, I'd like to. I think this is all well and good, but I think that we may be setting a precedent. So we're talking about eighteen hundred and sixteen dollars here. We're talking maybe something else will come up, and maybe it's twenty-five hundred dollars, maybe it's this. And I just don't feel comfortable in approving funds for events like this, considering that what the Fall Festival has done and like the Rotary's done and everything, and have paid their own way. And I just don't think that we should be setting a precedent here.
Now, didn't we just say that we paid the insurance for the Fall Festival? Did we set a precedent when we did that?
Okay. Sheila, any questions?
I'm afraid I have to agree with my council member here. I, I'm just concerned that last year, the ten thousand dollars were raised. And I imagine there were expenses that were incurred, but it was ten thousand dollars cleared. And if this year, you expect to double those proceeds, we're talking about a twenty thousand dollar fund for the community, which is wonderful. And I, you know, I don't want to seem negative about this.
No, I, I can...
But I'm concerned about the precedent that we've set, and we've turned down other organizations in the past. I think we had the band review come and ask for some funds, and we had turned that down. I'm just concerned, we know we're only talking eighteen hundred dollars, but I'm concerned with the issue of being able to do it for others. And I have to agree, I can't support that.
I understand completely, you know, what your hesitations are. And I think about that, you know, what type of precedent would we be setting with this? Is there any way that we can raise the money for this, the eighteen hundred dollars? Is there anything that...
Well, sure, there's three hundred there, three hundred here.
That's a good spot for it.
No.
Is there any other way to raise this?
Yes, if the council doesn't wish to vote on this, I myself will pay for it. So that's fine. I'll put the money for that, if you don't want to vote on that. But I would encourage other groups that are in the community to do something like this. If it could bring thousands of dollars into the community, I think it is something that the council should listen to and expand on. But if you don't feel that that's the thing to do, and it's going to open up a line of the door, then, you know, you shouldn't.
I do have concerns about that, setting a precedent. But I'm kind of weighing it with how good this was for the community last year, and just everyone was just reeling from it. It was just a wonderful event. I heard more comments about that than I did any of the other events, you know. And so I just think that it would be important to do it, but I understand it's tough. It's a tough decision. They didn't say this was going to be easy for a hundred dollars a month.
Well, at this time, I'm just going to ask for consensus, because this entire thing's going to be brought back. And, you know, as we all know, that there's not always going to be five oh votes on here, and that's why we're up here to agreeably, to agree to disagree.
Then there's no way we can bring this back at another...
Well, what I'm going to ask for now is to ask for some consensus to include this eighteen hundred into this and have the entire thing brought back. But with, if there's, I know there's two no votes, but there's three here. So if there's consensus from a majority of the council to include this eighteen hundred...
You should probably go ahead and have a motion, and then we can also bring, we'll bring it back anyway.
Okay, okay. Can we have a motion to include...
Sure, I'll make the motion that we approved the eighteen hundred, what's the dollars on it?
Eighteen hundred and sixteen.
Okay, that amount, excuse me, eighteen hundred and sixteen dollars for the security for the MDA to be held on April nineteenth, nineteen ninety-eight.
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Yes, eighteen.
A motion? Can we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes?
Yep.
No.
No.
Yes, motion passes three to two, and this will be included as well in the, into this proposal coming back to us. And again, let me say, I would hope that the different service clubs in our community that do well for our community, that we would also, you know, be willing to, I mean, to talk to them as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's see. Okay, item eleven A, this is a memorandum of understanding with Healthy Start.
Cleve? I don't know how many of you have been following this or not, but the Healthy Start program is an excellent program, and it's, what's why we're very healthy in our community, working very well. And this memorandum is another grant, this is for another grant that they will be going after as part of the Healthy Start program. And they have asked us to adopt this memorandum of understanding, which will allow them, just give them more clout or ammunition in going after this grant, to show that the city is cooperating with them. If you would like to look at page two and three, the bottom of page two and then page three, it outlines what the specific responsibilities or commitment is of the city of Newman in part of this. There's a couple of these, if you read them, that may concern you, but there is no specific funding that is required as part of this. It does say, "Assist in continuing to research in public and private funding to support expanded news uses. Allocate staff resources to Healthy Start One Stop Community Service Center." We already do somewhat of that. My, our police chief has been very active in participating in this program. He is the one, main one, I have been participating somewhat in it, but mainly him. And on the first page where it says, "Participate in the Healthy Start program by actively serving on the One Stop Community Service Center Advisory Committee." We've been participating there. Other items that you can see on this, participate, or provide in kind and or matching financial support. We will commit to do what we can. There's no specific amount that is required here. But this is a very good program, some very good services that are happening in our community that will be of benefit to us. And so I would recommend that we, I guess, would be to authorize the city manager to execute this memorandum of understanding.
Are there any questions for the city manager?
Question on allocating staff resources to the One Stop Community Service Center. What would be talking about there?
I'm not exactly sure, but they may ask for our commitment to possibly assist in staffing that from time to time. And it would be on the basis of if we could provide it, if we have staffing to help out over there from time to time.
Any other questions? All right, may we have some direction, please? Just a motion?
I'm not quite sure how to word this one. Go ahead, Sheila.
I think, I recommend approval of the memorandum of understanding between the Newman-Crows Landing Unified School District, Healthy Start One Stop Community Service Center Program, and the city of Newman.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Item number twelve, items from the city manager.
I don't have anything specific at this time, only that I'd like to remind you again of the two meetings, actually, that we have coming up next week. March second, we have the special meeting that we scheduled for two purposes. One is to discuss, begin our budget process by discussing the goals, citywide goals. Our department heads will be present at that meeting, too, to discuss specific department goals. The second half of that meeting will be the county presenting the visioning process, the vision statements, and getting our approval of those. We also have invited, and are inviting, both the Planning Commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission to participate in that part of the meeting. That will begin at six o'clock, so from six to seven will actually be the goal setting, and from seven to eight, the visioning process. The other thing, just emphasize, on March fourth, two days later, at the theater, will be the, oh, that meeting will take place at the theater, by the way, the one on March second. We've arranged for that in order for all of us to fit in there. The meeting on March fourth, again, emphasize that. It is really important that we get the public support for this project, and let the Corps of Engineers, who will be staffing that meeting on March fourth, let them know that we do need that project. So possibly to all the business owners in the community, as many people as possible, that can come out and stress to the core how important it is to the community to get that project is very important.
Question, Cleve?
Yes.
Timing on this, to me, is if we wanted the public to really participate in this, we wouldn't have it three o'clock in the afternoon. And I think this is unfortunate, because we could have people there.
Okay, let me explain. It's starting at three and going from eight. It is not something where they will be making a presentation at three o'clock. They come at three o'clock or at eight o'clock. They can come at seven thirty, seven forty-five. They can go in, and they'll see, such is the math they had up here, they'll have different stations which will show the different options. A person can walk around and talk to a representative of the Corps at each station and have that option explained to them. They can provide their comments, whatever they want at that time. So they're not going to miss anything by not being there at three o'clock. It's something, it will go all the way from three till eight o'clock at night. And they can simply come anywhere up to that eight o'clock at night and provide comments and get any of the information, so they won't miss out on anything.
I think that's good to know.
That's what we're doing, is providing something, the full time limit to allow everyone to comment, so...
Where is that meeting held at?
That will be at the theater also.
At the theater also?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So it'll be an open house type?
Yes, yes, it's an open house more than a, more than a meeting, yes. That's all I have. Thank you.
Council member Martina?
I just want to invite the entire city of Newman to be there on that day. Please show up, because if, you know, we're all concerned about the flooding that occurs in our community, and we've got to be there to show them that we really want something done. So that's all I have.
Council member Altamula?
Yeah, I, in kind of going with this, did you all also get this, the Upper Seminole River Association? Okay, good, that's, because there's that. And then the other thing was, this, the American promotional event about the, you know, the big fireworks thing that they're going to allow some cities and counties to participate in for the millennium? And I was wondering, is Newman one of these cities that this is...
What that is doing is the state passed a law which normally you're only allowed to sell fireworks by state law in the month of July.
Right.
The law that the state passed allows the city to do that also in January, or actually December, January, I believe the dates are, only this next year. That's not going to continue. It's just a one-time thing. I'm not sure. I haven't checked yet on what are, if we have any local ordinances pertaining to fireworks we do. So we would have to, we would also have to address that to allow them, if we want to, to sell fireworks in December of this year also, leading up to that, if that's something we want to do. And we'll bring that back to you at a later date. I got a copy of that also.
Okay. I think the other thing I wanted to bring up was, is wanting to strengthen some of the existing animal control laws. And I'd like to have the city attorney look into what our options are with that. There's another council member that would be interested in, you know, looking into that, too. About looking into strengthening the existing animal control laws, have a...
I would be interested in that also.
Yeah.
Will do.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Council member Radford?
Just want to mention that later this month, I'll be attending a policy meeting in Los Angeles on transportation, communication, and public works. If there are any issues along those lines that the city or that residents have, I'd ask that you get them to me so that we can bring them up at this policy meeting. It'll be held on March twenty-sixth. And again, it deals with the issues of transportation. The bullet train is one thing that comes to mind, communication, the area code realignments is a big issue, and then public works. So get your ideas to me, and I'll be glad to take them to the policy committee. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Council member Reed?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. There was a, in Bill Mattos' column in the index last week, there was a paragraph talking about the teen center, where we're trying to convert the youth center into a teen center, refurbish it, and where he mentions to contact City Hall about, just to urge the leaders to move ahead. I think that the leaders will move ahead. What we need now is people to come and volunteer some time or whatever to get this. I think the whole key is to get the citizens behind this and to make it happen. And I urge the people to call City Hall or stop any of us on the street and tell us that, what they could do for us here. And one other quick thing, I'd like to ask Ernie, what's the status on the Densmore Park? Getting close to baseball season.
Yes, it is. The problem has been, of course, the recent rains that we've had. We're just getting ready to go in there and spring tooth all that dried grass out of the field area, but it got rained on, it got too wet. So the tractors, we felt were going to sink. We needed some time for it to dry out. We will proceed with that, and we will do the installation of the sprinkler system. And we have been debating over whether it would be a good time to seed the field. Perhaps it would be best to just level it and let them play on their dirt until the early fall or next fall, when we can seed it, hydroseed it, and let the winter rains take care of it. And of course, if it doesn't rain, we'll have our sprinkler system in place.
Could we at least get the infields in shape and level that and all that?
We're keeping our eye on it, and we will get in there and do the best we can with what we've got, but...
I just wanted to add that I had talked to the baseball league about that, and that may be a problem. And they mentioned that they would not plan on using those this year. That they can make other arrangements so that they don't have to. They understand the problem, that we're trying to fix it to make it nicer for them in the future. And that they are not planning on having to use that this year. But it would be nice to have it, mainly for practices, I understand, is what they've used it in for in the past, so...
Thank you, Ernie.
Question, Ernie?
Sure.
As far as seeding, you say it couldn't be done until the next fall now?
Well, we're discussing it. We've been talking with the different people as to what would be the best approach. We don't know yet. If we, if we don't get any more rain, and we can get in there, and we can install the system, you know, immediately, and I think that we have a window in there, whereas we can go in there and see that we will sure try to do that. I know it's going to be difficult trying to keep people off of the field, especially, you know, such a large area. And you seed it and you irrigate it, and I know that we're going to have problems with people going out there and having some problems. But if we get more... But, uh, if we get more rains, well, I think that, that's pretty much gonna say, "Hey, uh, you know what? The best thing to do is seed it later on in the, uh, in the late fall."
The only, the only thing, we, we've disrupted that field. Now we're gonna disrupt it in the fall for, for the soccer groups and anything else, eh?
Um, it, it, it is, it is a difficult situation, and, uh, we're, uh, we're just trying to see what, uh, our options are, and.
Well, we'll, we'll be a lot better off. I remember last year, uh, for Little League, we would have, uh, the kids on, on our team would go to, to that, to Densmore Field to practice, and they couldn't slide at all because of the fields were, the infield were so, uh, rough, you know, and, and when they first tried to slide, it was, you know, they were probably gonna get hurt if they kept trying to slide. So, it may be some inconvenience, but I think in the long run, we're gonna be a lot better off, 'cause that field will be at least playable, and we won't have to worry about these kids not being able to slide on that field.
Yes, the field on the south side, uh, it didn't have any grass. It was just dead dirt, that whole infield area. So, uh, you know.
Well, it did until they took the grass out.
Well, um, yes, and then we were trying to get that back in there, so, uh.
Yeah, there was a group, a group of people that came in and removed that grass. And I don't know, it's like they were gonna maintain it, and they never did.
Well, I, I, I believe that what they wanted to do was put in some type of a special, uh, infield dirt, some of the reddish dirt that they were going to, uh, import, and it didn't work out too well.
Any other questions? Actually, Ernie, if you can wait right there. I had a question with regards to the ball field as well, being that the season's gonna start here in the next month or so. Uh, what do you guys normally do with regards to when it comes, maybe three weeks to a month, before the season starts? Do you guys go out to Barrington and maybe prepare the fields a little bit? And, uh, Materi Field, or, or no?
Most of, most of the work that's done, uh, you know, on the baseball fields and getting them ready for, for baseball play, that's generally done through the Recreation Department, and they have some of their workers. What we do is, on a, uh, on a routine basis, we just go out there and take the, care of the parks and mowing and trimming and et cetera.
All right. Other than that, I have no questions. At this time, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Meeting adjourned.